Astronomical and the private company is, they paid back that $1 billion sale price in like 12 years and they're gonna have 63 years of being able to enforce parking carte blanche without any say from the residents. So my concern is that I don't necessarily want to give our ability to enforce our parking away to another company, but it sounds like we do have the ability to have that. That leads me to the question is what happens if you don't feel comfortable with the level of enforcement that we're doing?
So there's stipulations in the contract that you will, you know, continue, you'll vigorously enforce and you'll enforce to your current standards, which, you know, merely means-
Which would be like 19%, right?
No, no, no. What that means is that you're not, you know, is that if you're typically ticketing for something, you continue ticketing.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm assuming your enforcement personnel aren't wandering around and saying, okay, you know what, I'm not gonna enforce that, I'm not gonna enforce that, I'm not gonna enforce that. We're assuming that when they see something, they enforce it. Now, we're not asking for 100% enforcement, not at all, but we're asking that they, they certainly don't, you know, neglect their duties, or as that's simple. And to your point about giving away, you know, your, your rights to enforce, it's all still on you.
Right, and I, I am, I am very happy that you said that because I think my biggest concern with having a, a separate entity do this is that we were gonna be giving away the ability for us to have control over what our residents are going through in relation to how their parking is being enforced.
Now, the, the Chicago model doesn't work-
Right.
As you said, and, and understand, the Chicago model doesn't involve our technology or anything like our technology, that was just a pure sale of the rights to, to enforce their parking. We don't do that, we don't sell, we don't buy, we partner with you to bring you the tools to have better enforcement, better space turnover, better compliance. And the reality too is there's, there's way too much emphasis on enforcement because what happens in practice is people just pay. So, you know, as much as everybody wants to concentrate on the ticket aspect of it, you know, what really happens is behavior change and people just say, okay, when I, when I visit Hamtramck, I know that I get out of my car and I pay the meter.
Right, and that's, that's what I want, that's what we, I think is the best for the community, just to know that we have to abide by the rules and if this is a way that we can better enforce them, then I think it's probably for the best. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, I have a, have a question. As a business owner on Joseph Campo, who needs to park my car while I'm at my business? I guess it will be up to the city to determine how we work with employees and, and business owners to give them places to park because obviously you're not gonna be, you know, feeding the meter, you know.
Well, that's, that's one of the things I wanted to mention about holding of the ordinance. Right now, that ordinance has provisions in it for resident passes, employee passes, monthly passes, et cetera. So that'll be something that this body will need to craft. And so if you wanna designate maybe a portion of Shoppers World and say, you know, for numbers, there's 130 places in that Shoppers World parking lot. And I can send this to everybody tomorrow, I'm happy to do so, send this, this chart, because this is pretty much most of the city, so you'll have that. Knifte Holbrook on the west side of the street, 50 spaces, Knifte Holbrook side streets that are already metered, 64 spaces-
Knifte Holbrook?
Knifte Holbrook on Joseph Campo-
Oh, on, okay, Campo from Knifte Holbrook.
Knifte Holbrook on Joseph Campo, 50 spaces on the west side, and then 64 spaces on the side streets, you know, the little, to the alley.
So-
And then east side is similar numbers. I'll send this to all of you tomorrow. Shoppers World parking at 130, so you can designate, like maybe in the lots, you know, these are ones that a business can buy a monthly pass or have a, you know, wait for their employees, something like that. However you wanna do it, I mean, that'll be up to the council, mayor, council.
So then, then another question I have is if we're bringing in a company to make this big investment, why are we only limiting Knifte to, to Holbrook?
And that was part of my initial presentation when I spoke was, you know, this is what we put forth, and this body can amend that, modify it to expand, you know, because then what the resolution today says is Knifte Holbrook, which is our, our main parking area that we have metered, there are some north, but I don't believe there's any to the south, there might be one or two to the south, but I'm not sure, I don't know if there's any there right now on top of my head. But you can do whatever this body wants to do.
What happened to the recommendation that you sent us two weeks ago about adding meters, I think, is that the paper you sent us?
Yeah, I did send that to all of you.
Is that including the contract that we're talking about today or?
So what we're, well, the resolution states again, is on Joseph Campo, Knifte Holbrook, all the side streets, the parking lots, including those in that area and in the Google area on Knifte. But if you want to expand that to any other areas, we certainly can do it. Or we can make this phase one, and bring it to phase two, we, you know, we have time to do that. But I wanted to bring this to this body because you have been the ones that have been thinking about this, and we're losing some of our members in the new year.
I'm, I assume that there's an economy of scale of doing the installation at one time rather than in phases?
No.
Actually, there isn't.
Okay.
You know, it, it really, you would think so, but the reality is no, is, is we can do phases and we commonly do do phases. You know, some cities wanna do it all at once and others say, okay, I only wanna do a little bit of, at a time. It's not invasive, you know, in terms of the installation, but nevertheless, there's some cities who, you know, like Hamtramck are looking at it saying, okay, where do we want this to be, and maybe they haven't figured it out. And our contracts always provide flexibility for the city to expand if it wants to.
So, so the question of, of what the parameters might be or how we, the details of, of how this works, you know, on the ground is really not necessary for the approval of the contract tonight, then.
We can always amend this resolution later.
Then if there are no other questions, I thank you and-
I thank you.
And open the, to further discussion.
Isn't there a comment?
Nope. Nobody's got anything else to say? All right. Then let me, let me wake up my computer here. Okay, we have a resolution for the approval to enter into a parking services agreement with municipal parking services. And we have, that resolution's already been made and seconded?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Congratulations.
And I do know that Brian needs to leave after his presentation tonight, so we'll thank you in advance and we'll be in touch.
It's nine to nine o'clock.
Okay, next item is a resolution approving the acceptance of the SEMCOG asset management grant funding.
I'll offer.
Support.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Mark Garretti with Tennessee Engineering here that's gonna give a quick overview, and Rodney Johnson is here just-
People have support today. Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Garretti with Tennessee Engineers. And what you have before you is SEMCOG has a grant program for the communities to begin their base work for your GIS. And basically what it would be is to do some funding for locating your utilities, your water and your sewers by GPS to set up the database so when your GIS program would come into existence, it could be downloaded. Originally, SEMCOG had $500,000 to be awarded to the communities with none exceeding $50,000. They ended up with over 60 applications, so they opted to do 10,000 max to each app. This program is basically for any of the roads, major roads within Hamtramck that are federally aid-eligible, which is approximately 9.44 miles of roadway within the city limits. Based on that, Ryan calculated that in order to do the, do the locating via GPS, we're looking at just under $38,000 to locate all the manholes, hydrants, et cetera. So the $10,000 doesn't get it all done, but it does put a big dent in it on those major, on the utilities on the major roads. Also, I guess, from my understanding through Ryan, that SEMCOG may be offering this grant program beyond this year, in 2020, 2021.
The other, the other bit of information that SEMCOG shared is that if some city does not accept the grant because it's not enough, they would think about redistributing the remaining money, and we would be in line for that.
Do we have any questions? Any discussion? Thank you.
Hard to turn around free money.
Yeah, then we have a resolution approving the acceptance of the SEMCOG asset management grant funding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Next item is a resolution approving the City of Hamtramck employee handbook.
Offer. Support.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
So who will be in charge of enforcing this employee handbook?
So that will be, so every one of the employees that is under a labor contract, that would be the default. If something was absent from the labor contract, you know, a department, all, all employees will receive this when they're hired, those that are existing employees will sign a paper and get it delivered to them by email. We will also, you know, department heads will be familiar with it, you know, everybody that works in the city will be familiar with it, and if there's something enforceable that's necessary, the appropriate person will do that. Is there something in particular?
Well, I mean, like Ms. Las, Leslie brought up, and I know you just added in labor contracts, but it does, the resolution says individual contracts. So for Mr. Garberino's position, we have not received a job description, it was not posted, so technically, the administration would be in violation of the employee handbook.
Actually, no, the, Ms. Lasley did not read the provision clearly because the provision itself provides-
Because you wrote it, so you don't-
That's right, I did, I did write that provision. So that provision allows the city manager in appropriate circumstances to use alternative means to fill a position.
Still, we still haven't received a job description, so, just so you know, just so the public knows.
Are there any other questions, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
I, I did have some things that I wanted to bring up. I was looking at, I think it's 3.1, filling a vacancy. I did think that it would be appropriate to change it to the position, I think we should change the language from the position may be publicized in a manner likely to gain qualified applicants to will be. I don't know why we would not want to publicize a position that can gain us qualified applicants. I also think that it would be appropriate to strike the line that says inappropriate circumstances, the city manager may select an alternative method for filling vacancies. Just what we had in our last meeting, I think, is just indicative of a need to have a more transparent process for hiring new employees.
I'll make that resolution to make that amendment. So you need- So you have, you're proposing an amendment to section three?
3.1-
One?
To reflect that when the City of Hamtramck, when a position in the City of Hamtramck may become open, the position will be publicized in a manner-
Or shall be.
Or shall, yeah, will, shall, it should not may, it should not be may, it should be a mandatory verb and not like a, one that you could choose to, to or not to do.
So basically, it would-
The position shall be publicized.
Okay, and it would-
And then the last sentence of 3.1, inappropriate circumstances, the city manager may select an alternative method for filling vacancies, I would like to strike that line. So I, I guess her proposed amendment, or, yeah, amendment to the resolution would reflect what I just stated, if that's clear for everybody.
So we have a proposed amendment to-
I'll second hers.
Uh huh, to section 3.1, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman?
Is, that's the reason why you have administration and you don't have a strong mayor around city, where the city manager or any administration-
Councilwoman, go ahead.
So that's where you have administration that are capable of performing those duties.
Is there any other discussion of the amendment?
I mean, I think he's got a point that there is a reason why there's a strong city manager and not a strong mayor, but I still believe that the position should be publicized in a manner, and it needs to be publicized and not shall, or not, it should not be optional.
Is there any other discussion? Then we have a proposed amendment to section 3.1, filling a vacancy, to re, uh, strike the last sentence and replace, in the, in the remaining last sentence, replace will with shall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Just call the vote.
The amendment does not pass.
Uh, I, I do have some other things I would like to point out. Section 3.3 qualifications, it says, per the City Hamtramck Charter, Chapter 6, Section 616, all appointments and promotions of city officials and employees must be made on the basis of merit and fitness demonstrated by a valid and reliable examination or other evidence of competence. So I, I think that, I think this is, I, I'm not trying to bring this back to last week, but I think that we need to look at the actions of what we did last week in light of what we're trying to propose as a definitive set of rules. We did not have a valid and reliable examination or other evidence of competence for the position that we created last week, and we didn't have any metric to, to decide how that, how we should determine competence. I thought that was worth pointing out that we are going to be adopting rules that we have decided, like, we have already broken. You know, section 8.1 also said that theft, destruction, inappropriate removal or possession of city property is grounds for termination, and that was a point that was discussed at length last week in relation to the hiring, uh, creation of that position. Personal opinions should not be representative as those of the city, and when that individual went on television and stated his side and said, kind of spoke for the city, I think that would be a violation of that. Uh, 8.6, emails shall not be deleted, just another violation. So I, I just, what I wanted to point out is that we're creating rules that seem to have already been violated by people that we're willing to hire. I guess it's also worth noting that in the beginning of it, the manual, it says that the manual is not to be construed as an enforceable contract, so I think that cuts both ways and almost makes it like a moot point for passing it. So, yeah, I, I just, those were some of the issues that I came across and thought of while I was reading through this employee handbook. Uh, other than that, I think it's appropriate that we have a city handbook, and I'm surprised that it has taken this long to, to get one, like officially, so that's all I've got to say.
Any other comments? Then we have a resolution approving the City of Hamtramck employee handbook, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The resolution passes. Next item is a resolution approving the contract extension for the American Federation of State City Municipal Employees, Local 666.
Offer. Support.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
I just wanna say, I really did not scrutinize this contract much. I believe that when we have an employee union, they've got their own process for determining what they desire, what they don't desire, and if a contract is brought before us and it is stated by members of the union or representatives of the union that is what they desire, then I think it's appropriate that we go through with it.
Councilman?
Thank you. Similar sentiment, I just wanna say, those, uh, small group of, uh, members of that organization and that, uh, union, I think they deserve what this contract is proposing, and I'm in support of it. I think they do a phenomenal job in our, in our city.
There's no other discussion, then we have a resolution approving the contract extension for American Federation of State-
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor? Let me make a comment.
Sure.
I just, you know, in working with the absentee members, I gotta tell you, it was the most pleasant negotiation that I could have anticipated to want to be a part of. Every member of their negotiating team was respectful, behaved in a manner that you would be proud of. And this particular union, I wanna give you a little bit of history on what they have gone through by way of compensation in their paychecks, not even mentioning the other things that, that happened. Going back to 2004, 0%, 0%, and then five years in a row of 2%. And then they received 0% again, 1%, 3%. And since 1314, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six years of 0%. Six years in a row of 0%. They did receive a $1,100 stipend in the last three years, but 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0. A person that in July of 13 made $17.69 is still making that today, from 2013 to today. This union, the wage package that's in here is, I wish we could have done more, to be quite frank, but we couldn't. So when asked if everybody will get the same kind of compensation, when you hear the history of this particular body, I'd be hard pressed to think that, that we could do the same thing for others, because they've received raises along the way, this group has not. And so I just wanted to commend the President, Andrew Robinson, and every one of their members for the way they've conducted themselves during this negotiation.
Then we have a resolution approving the contract extension for Local 666, ask me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
And next item is a resolution that was added, a resolution to dedicate a 100 to 50, by 50-foot section of Veterans Park to commemorate the accomplishments and contributions of the Yemeni-American community.
Let me make a motion. Second.
A discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
This resolution is very general, and I'm gonna make a brief representation here about the project. I think Yemeni-American community has been dedicated and been donating to the whole nation since 1918, the first Yemeni-American landed to this great country. And I strongly believe, and not only me, majority of the Yemeni-American community and other people, thinking that the Yemeni-American community should be recognized and awarded and have something, and leave a fingerprint or a foreprint in this country, and I think Hamtramck is the right place for it because we have a big community, Yemeni-American community in, in Hamtramck. So what will, what is the plan is, we, a committee of 15 people gathered and they follow Robert rules in their meetings, and they, they have a project that, to create Yemen Town. Yemen Town has Yemen Park Center. Yemen Park Center will be right at the corner of Gudson and Joseph Campo, right next to Oshiba Restaurant. What will the center include is some statues from Yemen and some tablets, information tablets, to mention the history of the Yemeni-American community and some of their stories, and to make Hamtramck residents and Hamtramck visitors aware and recognize more about Yemeni-American community. So this is the project, but during discussion, discussing that, we found out that this, that lot is not enough for the project to exist, therefore, we needed more space. That's why we brought this resolution. This lot that we're talking about today is, will remain open green lot, will not be fenced, will not be covered, will remain a big lot as it right now, but what will happen, we may be add a mural on the wall of Yemen Ca, of Yemen Cafe, and maybe add some tablet informations or maybe some other things, but will not be very high, or maybe higher than the, the, the memorial over there. So this is the resolution, I think Yemeni-American community deserves to be awarded this, and hopefully, it's gonna be approved, and within a year, maybe a year and a half, you will see a wonderful, nice thing, that will be icon for Hamtramck, and will bring businesses and more visitors to Hamtramck.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
I wanted to, I just wanted to shed some light real quickly on, at the bottom of this resolution where it says, by the city council, now therefore be resolved, by the city council of the City of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, that a strip measuring approximately 100 feet by 50 feet commencing in the northwestern corner of Veterans Park alongside Joseph Campo, shall be dedicated for the placement of appropriate monuments, markers, statues, signs, and other customary tributes celebrating the contributions members of the Yemeni community that have made to the betterment of the City of Hamtramck, the county of Wayne, the state of Michigan, and the United States as a whole. Um, I have a follow-up to that. Councilman Sada, real, real, uh, real quickly, I remember when we initially discussed this along with the executive board, does this in any way, shape, or form have any conflict with the memorandum of understanding that was signed with Ali and Ayad of, of what's it called, for the mural? I just wanna make sure that we don't, like, we don't ruin one project or, or inhibit it in any way by extending or giving 100, what?
No.
100 by 50 foot?
No, it does not, it's not contrary to the thing that we passed last meeting, as I told you, and is it-
It isn't contrary, right?
The lot will be the main, the lot on Gudson and Joseph Campo will be the main location for the park.
Okay.
And the location that we're talking about right now, 100 by 50 feet, will be extra, some other stuff, that, that lot does not have any space for.
So there won't be any conflicts between the two whatsoever?
No, there won't.
So, so my question related to that is, since this is the first I'm seeing of this project, and we've been seeing a lot about the other, um, project for a long time, have you discussed this particular project with one Hamtramck?
Uh, yes, we have discussed it, and Bell Meyer is one of our committee members.
The guy that's shaking his head no? That he hasn't discussed it with you?
Not this resolution.
Not this resolution, but you are a committee member, and we voted on this to bring it to the council three meetings ago, you were not there.
How many names are on this?
Yeah, we, we, we just can't have a back and forth right now, so.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Are we able to give or allocate a piece of Veterans Park to something like this? Does it, it violate SHPO? Does it, I mean, it's a historical, if it's a historical marker and SHPO's already said we can't alter what we have-
Well, they have let us put a historical marker in Veterans Park.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, so if there's already something in historic, or in Veterans Park, is SHPO gonna have an issue with us changing?
Why would?
Oh, we're not changing it.
Because they, well, they wouldn't let us alter it when it was coming to the stadium. They've denied a project because of that.
That, that's not exactly the same, but I do understand what you're saying. I don't know the answer to how that would work. Right now, we cannot make any changes to the park, or add, delete anything that isn't approved by, because we're using federal funds, that has not met the scrutiny of the state historic preservation office. And so we're using federal funds for a project, and I'll speak to that during my city manager comments, but for this instance, I, I don't know how that would work, Councilwoman. I do know that when you're talking about park property, there are certain rules by which the council can either add things, delete things, change a park, make a park designation, and so I do caution you on that. I mean, you may want to support this, but we may have to do some more work in order to do that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, Councilwoman, I don't wanna speak against what your idea is.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
It's always your right to put something out here, but I'm not sure at this point that it can be done. I, I, I don't discount what Councilwoman Karpinski said, I take value in that, but it's something that would have to be explored. So I would say that should you decide to approve this, that you should amend it and say, following all appropriate, you know, city ordinances for park designation, and also, if there's any historic issues- also, if there's any historic issues that would prevent us, we should definitely include that.
I would amend that, yeah. And this is our first step, it's not, this resolution is not selling that lot for whatever, whoever. It's just a first step, we're not even changing the lot, the park name or anything, it will be something added to the park and make it more beautiful.
So, Madam Chair.
Councilman?
So, one of the committee member mentioned earlier in his comments that it would be just benches or sitting setup. Is that still what I'm understanding, or are we looking at monuments, markers, statues, signs, and, well, I guess?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a design, actual design, a design so far, but we, we, our intention is to make the main project on the corner lot.
On the mural itself?
Yeah, on the corner lot.
Yeah.
And whatever left, small things, or maybe drawing, or mural, or maybe a map in the ground, we will extend, extend it to the, to the other location.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman?
Are we allowed to speak to any of the members on the executive board for any, I mean, for any additional questions that we may have? I'm just, I'm just asking.
We don't, if we're in a committee?
I mean, it's up for discussion amongst us, I get that, but, I mean, we're gonna vote on something, I just wanted to ask.
We can, we can ask.
Well, and my thing too is, I under, I mean, I'm not opposed to this, I would like to know the ins and outs of if we are allowed to do this.
But that's contingent, that's already gonna be an.
I understand that, but I mean, this, the two committee members that spoke kept saying Yemen Town, I never heard of this committee at all, I don't, I don't, this was never brought to us before, is this just something Mr. Almas Mari wants to get through because this is his last meeting? I mean, I don't, I don't think.
No, that, that's not the reason.
Okay, but I don't think anybody would be opposed to doing this come January first, once we have more information. They said benches, this says mural, this says statues. So I mean, I'd like to have a little bit more clarifications before I agree to vote on it.
I mean, you can amend the resolution to whatever you want, as long as we have that in the country.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that any changes to the park, any additions to the park, whether it's, you know, a mural would be on the private property, so that wouldn't, wouldn't come before us. But even the addition of benches, markers, anything like that would have to come to council for approval.
Yes, again.
You, you, what, what I would think you would expect, Mayor Council, is that, when, when a real plan is put together, 'cause now it's, you're asking essentially, can we plan?
Yes.
Can we plan? Can we think about that piece of land and talk about doing it? And then when you have a plan, much like, you know, when other times when we've brought park plans here, you bring it to council, and the council reviews it and votes on it.
Well, bring the design.
So just the preliminary phases ultimately, this is like just taking the proactive approach to.
So, can I offer a amendment to this resolution to strike, now therefore be resolved, comma, strike everything else from there, and insert to buy legal and all the administrative understanding that needs to go?
I've got some wording devised, yeah.
Okay, so I, you're, you're, go ahead.
Yeah, so what I was proposing to add would just be, now therefore be resolved in accordance with all city ordinances and contingent on any other city, county, state, or federal restrictions, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
That sounds, that would be my.
I didn't go to law school either.
And then you would expect, Madam Mayor, if I'm hearing you properly, that you would want them, as the plans develop, to bring a presentation.
Definitely, yeah.
Say, this is what we'd like to do, and then you would vote on that.
This is our plan, this is just the first step to get the law done plus.
So I'll propose that, I don't know, can the mayor propose it, or no?
No.
Okay, I'll propose that, what mayor said.
Can you read it again, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, sure. So then the last, the last section of the read, "Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with all city ordinances and contingent on any other county, city, county, state, or federal restrictions, now therefore we brought the city of Hamtramck, blah, 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 in accordance with, et cetera, what I just said, that a strip." So it's just inserting that wording?
I'll support that.
Okay, so we have a, that's a second?
He, he motioned it?
So is there, all those in favor of the amendment to this resolution?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so now we've got a resolution as amended. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
Okay, a few things to say about this. Well, first thing, I'm live streaming this meeting, and I've got a notification from Abraham Iesh. He stated, "The resolution to dedicate a portion of Veterans Park for a special project would undermine the plans to build a Yemeni Heritage Park in front of the mural located on the Shiba Restaurant wall, which we've been negotiating for since February. I urge council to vote against this last-minute resolution, there was no discussion with community leaders and stakeholders." So, just wanted to state, that was a message that I got regarding this specific resolution. I feel like we are really putting the cart before the horse here. We have a resolution to do all this stuff, and we have not even discussed any of it. What we did discuss was, or what has been discussed, I should say, is what was presented to us over the course of an hour before our meeting, which was a master plan for the entire, what was being called the Recreation District, which made no mention of this. It has never been brought up, and it would really throw a wrench in, I think, that. And I don't wanna sound like I'm opposed to this idea, because honestly, when there was an issue with whether or not that the mural on the other side of the building could be saved, I was thinking something similar along this, you know, why not just put it, put the mural on the other side of Yemen Cafe and, you know, get a little park? I think it's not a bad idea, but if we have a park already on the other side, then I think it's a little redundant. I think, you can call me cynical, but I kinda do think that this is a last-ditch effort for my colleague to have, like, a claim of win under his belt. I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but.
You are.
No, I'm not.
You simply are.
I'm not opposed to it. What I am actually opposed to is this pattern of bringing up resolutions at the last minute without any discussion or opportunity for anybody to learn about them whatsoever. So this is the second week in a row that we've had this, and this is a ongoing problem within this council. You know, you guys said you had three meetings, you guys have been discussing this for weeks. Why are we just finding out about it right now?
There's, there's a different.
Hold on, I'm actually not finished, I do have one more thing to say directly related to this being brought up. And it also relates to everything else that's been tacked on to our agenda items willy-nilly at the last minute. Our city ordinance, our city code thirty dash zero zero four, I'm gonna read it. "All reports, communications, ordinances, resolutions, contract documents, or other matters to be submitted to the city council as part of the agenda shall be delivered to the city manager by four P M. on Tuesday, with the final agenda posted by three P M. on Wednesday preceding the council meeting. Any report, communication, ordinance, resolution, contract document, or other matter presented in appropriate form by a council member or the mayor for inclusion on the agenda within the time limit prescribed shall appear on the agenda under New Business." Now, here's an important part, "An item that does not appear on the agenda may not be considered for approval by the city council and shall be referred for consideration at the next regular council meeting. The city manager and mayor shall prepare the agenda. The city manager shall furnish each city council member, et cetera, with a copy of the agenda. None of the foregoing matters shall be presented to the city council by administrative officials except those of an urgent nature." Sorry, I've got this screenshot. No resol, okay, skip down to section C, "No resolution or ordinance that does not directly address an id, an agenda item may be considered." This, we don't have an agenda item on our agenda that addresses this, so we can't make an agenda resol, like amendment and have this on the agenda. The same issue happened with the contracts that we put on our agendas last week, and that's why I voted against the consent agenda, because I didn't think it was appropriate to approve minutes for a meeting that we conducted in violation of our own code. So, you know, for these reasons, I, I just think it's rather capricious and ill-timed to, to put this on the agenda at the last minute without any consideration for any other council members. That being said, I'm, you know, in support of recognizing our Yemeni residents and their contribution to this community. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Then we have, oh wait, we still didn't vote on the amendment, right?
Yeah.
We did. Oh, okay, okay. Then we have a resolution, dedicate a one hundred by fifty-foot section of Veterans Park to commemorate the accomplishments and contributions of the Yemeni-American community. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The resolution passes. And that's the end of New Business. Brings us to our reports. I have no report for you tonight, I'm just gonna wish you all a happy holiday season. Mr. Mayor, for example?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanna thank everyone in the, in the city hall that do all that they can to improve the lives and cherish everything that we dear, hold dear, you know, as Hamtramckans. And I appreciate the gift, thank you, Councilmen, for the shirt as well. And just to bring up a point with my colleagues, work is never easy, finding solution is never easy, 'cause if that was the case, then everybody would be walking around with bags full of solutions and ideas. So I hope that you guys will work with the new council that's coming in. I'm pretty sure they're gonna need some guidance from you guys as well. All I can say is try, I mean, all you can do is try. And I'm not going anywhere, still beyond Prescott, so anytime you need or want some help or anything, I can be of any help, please let me know, I would definitely do my best to partake or help as much as I can. And again, thank you to all those that was present and there, holding, supporting, to make sure that we do the best we can for the people of Hamtramck. Again, I'm not going anywhere, and I wish you well, Happy New Years, Merry Christmases, Happy Holidays, be safe, enjoy time with your friends and family. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
Since this is, I think, my last meeting during my term, starting January twenty sixteen, ending December of twenty nineteen, it was my honor to represent the city of Hamtramck residents in the city council, and I have just a statement of appreciation and also a statement of apologize. I appreciate everyone who has firstly voted for me, helped me get in this, in this body, and helped me with the advice, helped me with their opinion. I appreciate the great job that my colleagues and my Madam Mayor have done with the state of Hamtramck during my term, I think we have done a great job, we did our best. Yes, we might be making some mistakes, but the intention always was good. I never looked, I never tried to gain any personal benefits, all I have done is serve this committee, community. And my apologize to everybody who misunderstood me, who thought that I tried to hurt him or hate him or don't like him, that was not the case at all. I will be Hamtramck resident forever. I'm in favor, I will be attending the city council meetings. If there is any passionate for me, I'll run again for any office to serve this committee or this community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman?
Good evening, everyone. I know my, what would be very much similar with my colleagues. After all, we had the same passenger with the same boat. Six years, it's been a long time, quite a journey, and I must say it has been a pleasure and honor to get the community to serve me, to serve the whole Hamtramck community. I should say, I enjoy serving of Hamtramck, flat one hour being a part of city council member. Sometimes our position is, as a councilman, requires difficult decision, and sometimes complicated issue comes by us. Together we face those issue, and some case, of course, we did make difference. Here I like to thank all the people of Hamtramck who supported me immensely and show our media loves in my joy and sorrows times. Big, I have a big thanks for the city manager. All the, all the, especially, especially city clerk, Gogas Gastino. City, attorney, city attorney, G. Mellon, Hestaf, prosecutor, who tolerate me every moment here and there. Guys, it is not the end, I may need your help in future. Thank you, mother of Hamtramck, Madam Mayor, to support me. It is felt, felt awful working with you, with you, and my very best wishes to nearly elected Michelle, and my beloved one who's still running in the council. I wish you good, I wish you good luck, and good luck in Pramik. Thank you.
I think we should give a round of applause for all the council members. Thank you for your service. Madam Mayor, I just, just a brief report. I wanted to just state that I noticed recreational marijuana went on sale earlier this month, saw some numbers, and first eight days, five places did 1.6 million dollars in sales, that's $200,000 per location, $40,000 per day. Just a lot of revenue that we are leaving on the table, something for our new council to think about, something for our residents to think about. That's pretty much it. Also, I was, sent a message that stated that the Yemen resolu, the park resolution would set the negotiations back as it appears to open the door for an alternate park, so unfortunately that one passed. That's all I have to say.
If there is no, no other council people who'd like to speak, then Madam City Manager? Oh, yes, sure, that's fine.
Thank you, and thank you for accepting this at the last minute, as the city manager said, I wasn't sure that we could get it far enough along in being balanced to share it. I do wanna say that there's probably a couple things that I've been to realize we didn't get done in this rushed date, so there may be a couple minor changes, but they will indeed be minor, if there are any. In the interest of time, I was gonna say, every, we have, all of the departments are within their forty-two percent of budget spend, or there's a reason for them not to be. For example, elections, we've already spent a lot of money because we have a lot of elections going on, so I could explain all of those if you wanted me to go through them, or we can put that off for another meeting, you will be getting budget adjustments to take care of, of some other things. Not sure if we'll have it for the first meeting in January, it'll probably be the second meeting in January. If there's anything specific, I know that you haven't had much time to look at them, but I'm always available in my office. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did wanna mention, I thought this was gonna be an even longer agenda, and because it's nine thirty already, I'm glad that we didn't add two more presentations. We'll be looking forward to one from Plant Moran and one from MERS in the new year. And I would ask our, our council members that are leaving, I would hope that I could invite you to those, because that's something that was a part of your term of service. I wanted to have that at this meeting or the last meeting, 'cause we've been trying to get those things to the meetings, but it's just not time yet. So I'll make sure that you get a copy of those presentations, if you're not able to attend or watch.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Additionally, the mayor and Councilman Parada and I are meeting with DTE along with our engineering firm, as well as our, some of our staff members on Thursday morning. We cannot have a quorum there, but if there's another member that is particularly interested, nine A M. in the third floor conference room, and I would welcome you to attend, but please contact me. but please contact me, 'cause we cannot have a quorum at the meeting, um, it would, it would be, we'd need to have less than, uh, three of you that are voting members. Um, but that is, um, in response to the, um, resolution that Councilwoman Parada put forward, and we're meeting with one of the, um, higher level, uh, the person that's in charge of the gas main project throughout the state of Michigan. Um, additionally, um, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the three exiting members. In different ways, you've each been really, really significant for this community. Councilman Musa, you care about this community, and, you know, it shows every time you speak, and I, I just wanna thank you for that. Councilman Almasmari, um, from the beginning, um, I liked you, and it was, as if, um, you just wanted to learn a lot about this community and, and do the right thing, so I thank you for that. Councilman Mia, your wisdom on this council has been admirable, you've done a lot with this council to bring peace, um, and tried to bring a sense of professionalism to the council meetings, and, and I appreciate you for that. I'll miss you all, I look forward to our new council members, but I will miss all of you. Um, Councilwoman, Woman Karpinski asked for a C D B G report, um, and I'm prepared to give that tonight. Um, on, uh, August twenty-seventh, we received a letter from the, um, Community Development Block Grant Audit, um, giving us, um, a, a glowing recom, uh, glowing report that our work, cooperation, and assistance made this requirement easy for us in the county of Wayne to meet. Our files were complete, well-organized, allowed for the review to be completed quickly and thoroughly. Uh, the only recommendation we need, we would make at this time is that an asset log be submitted to the county every year, and we send a copies, copy of our organization chart, and we did that. Um, didn't know it was required beforehand, but we did, we completed that task. Um, as for our two thousand eighteen funding, we received two thou, two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, ten percent of that was for administration, you remember, we talk about that regularly, that that was an offset to a salary line item that will no longer be available to us, that was twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars that we were reimbursed, um, code enforcement was fifty thousand dollars allocated, and these were things that you approved, um, some time ago. Um, that offset salaries and the expenses of the code enforcement department, it did not cover it in its entirety, but it did offset a, a large portion, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, twenty-five, and we've received the reimbursement for that already, um, twenty-five thousand was, uh, allocated for cleanup, uh, that was community and city cleanup efforts, um, we have submitted the reimbursement for that, but that has not yet been received. Um, our parks, we allocated one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, that was for sidewalk replacement along the soccer arena, fencing the Futsal Court, that was about eighty-six thousand dollars, I'm rounding those numbers off. Um, the camera project, um, that you approved some time ago, Councilwoman Karpinski sent a, um, email to the county asking if that project could be approved based on the SHPO, um, comments from the, uh, that the, the, uh, let me back up, the county had submitted an application to the SHPO Department in the state of Michigan asking for designation for the historic stadium. They sent a letter back saying that SHPO needed to be looked at for the entire area, um, which is typical of a SHPO response. So at this time, we have not yet signed a contract for the camera installation, um, our documents are at SHPO getting looked at. We have cooperated with the county in every way with their comments on that. Um, typically, when you do something like this by equipment, there is not a SHPO requirement, 'cause we weren't breaking ground to do it. There was no, SHPO is, is generally something for buildings, road projects, curves, et cetera. Um, for this particular project, I didn't know it was needed until last week, I was informed last week that SHPO was needed. Now, um, I did know that there was a, a letter from the county saying, "Don't do anything at the park," 'cause that was sent to us in relation to the expenditure for the patronicity on the wall diamond. I did not believe it was related, and I'll hold that, that was something I should've known, that it would be related to installing cameras in four locations, it's a wireless system. Um, verbally from SHPO, they gave us a good verbal, but they have not given us a written on those documents yet, we await that, and we'll hope to be able to do the camera system. Um, if we are not approved to do that, um, I would like to say to this body that you have allowed us to buy park equipment, and that would not require SHPO, if we were to order extra benches or garbage cans to be installed at a later date, um, if you would allow me to do something like that, in order to spend this money, that has to be spent by December thirty-first. And so with that, um, I, I will ask the county for an extension on this, if the SHPO goes longer. They assured us that they would be able to review that quickly, if that doesn't happen, I will ask for an extension. Um, and if I need to go, um, beyond that department head, I will, to ask for that, 'cause it's about thirty-one thousand dollars that we still have remaining in our park funds, but I'll make every effort. So the process for two thousand nineteen and beyond, um, we were awarded twenty thousand dollars for code enforcement, and the proposed funding is five hundred thousand for the Hamtramck Stadium, and so that relies on other funds coming into, to play as well, and getting that SHPO clearance, et cetera. Um, we submitted seven, um, applications, you're allowed unlimited, the seven applications that we, um, submitted were for downtown alley improvements, clean, additional cleanup dollars, additional code enforcement, gateway improvements, the Hamtramck Stadium, oh, it's six, 'cause I thought that one was a party, and sign translations through, for throughout the city. Um, other than the Hamtramck Stadium and the twenty thousand dollar allocation for code enforcement, none of those were approved. Um, so if you have ideas about the next round, what kind of things that you would want to submit, gladly take any input that you have, in fact, I'd like to have a, you know, a, a study session or open up the dialogue about what you would want to apply for, for the next round of funding. Um, there, it's a rolling deadline, so we do, you know, we'll, we'll, after the first of the year, start putting together an application, there's not a firm timeline on that, unless they've changed it, we were told it would have a rolling deadline, that you could continually put in applications, um, but these are the ones that we've been afforded, that's the ones we applied for, and the ones that we receive, any questions?
Thank you.
Welcome. And we have closed session, um, update on lawsuits, uh, and a couple of other things, um, do not expect to vote.
Make a motion to go into closed session?
Oh, we started a public comment.
Also, before we go to the public comment, can we clarify, our next meeting is, it's gonna be canceled, and then the next time that our, the council body is gonna be on, is it the Sun, Sunday when we do the swearing-in?
Yes, January fifth, um, set aside that date.
I will not be in state on January fifth, so, um, you can certainly do it without me, but, um, I'll be at a conference.
But we'll talk about that, 'cause maybe you wanna do it differently, you know, we're not required to do it then, but, you know, maybe we'll want to do it differently, Madam Mayor, 'cause I know you enjoy it so.
But we don't have, so we don't, but we don't have the organizational meeting, or when is it?
Our next council meeting will be on the fourteenth.
Do we have an organizational council meeting, uh, it's like the first something?
It's supposed to be the first.
First Tuesday of the year or something?
Supposed to be, according to Turner.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
I will post that on our city Facebook page and on our website, and then I will communicate with Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then we open the floor again to public comment.
Evening again, I'll point out a couple things, one thing that Mr. Peron had pointed out, I think should be well-taken, how these contracts were done with amended agenda item, maybe in violation of council rules. I think there's also a question of whether it even violated the Meetings Act, that should be researched legally, because, I mean, there is a remedy, if the Open Meetings Act has been violated, do not give proper public notice ahead of time. There is a remedy in the Open Meetings Act to avoid that particular action by, by the city council or any public body. That's to be looked into, I think, just simply as a regular measure, to add things as late agenda items that nobody knows about, the public or the council will know about, especially in the area where there was no apparent emergency, because they apparently negotiated these contractual items, uh, well beforehand, had approved, had negotiated, and did it. I think it smacks of simply, if it is even, if it's, even it's legal, it's not proper public policy. It's not, it doesn't, it's conducive to helping the public and letting them know what's going on. And, you know, that's irrespective whether it was a good idea hiring Max or to give these contract terms to Ms. Anger. It's just simply not good public policy, not that, with the public, unless the council will notice ahead of time. Other thing, Mr. Peron said, uh, we should have seen, tried to complain, years ago, we did, it was never approved by the city council owners, I know, I had, I litigated issue regarding handbooks several years ago, and there should also be something that the, the city's aware of, to include proper and strong arbitration agreements, I have heard car appeals, and a drafted arbitration agreement is held to be unenforceable. And I think, uh, if we're gonna have these agreements with these employees, there should be very strong arbitration terms sort of locked in. Not a situation where it has to be litigated, back and forth in cert court, court appeals, and, uh, and I think what we need to do in this-